Feel like there's a lot of history in this house.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure there is.
Um, Jamie?
Yes.
It's Roger. He bought the house from Ernie Stanley, who was the councilman.
Right. And Ernie Stanley, there was a group of them.
Lost my glasses.
Hi, Stevie.
Hey.
You getting your house in order, Christine?
We're getting there. I started taking down some wallpaper and that's been a lot of fun.
I'm expecting your call any day.
Come over whenever.
Okay, I'm gonna get started. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Smith?
Here.
Squeak?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Libel?
Here.
Wees?
Here.
Elder?
Here.
Addie?
Here.
Okay, uh, council has a copy of the minutes. Uh, there any, from the last meeting, are there any, uh, changes or corrections to the minutes? No, then they'll stand as they are. Council also has a copy of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? No? Okay, well, before we start this reading, um, I just wanna say, we only have one thing on the agenda tonight. So I'd like to give everybody that's on the screen the opportunity to, to talk, if they'd like to, after I'm gonna ask for council committee reports. Then I'll ask for council comments and anybody else that's on the screen can comment as well. If they have something they wanna say. So if you wanna go ahead, Stevie, with the first reading.
Second reading of a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a revolving loan fund agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency and declare emergency.
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, this is the second reading. At the first reading, um, I had said we didn't need to suspend Rule Four. Actually, I have my dates wrong on that. This application is our, for our revolving loan fund, as, as explained. They actually do February 1st, so I've gotta get it in by February 1st. I, I would, uh, really appreciate if we could suspend Rule Four on this, so I can get it turned back in.
Madam President?
Yes, Angie.
I move to suspend Rule Four.
I second it.
Angie moves to suspend Rule Four. Jim Sleet seconds. There any questions or comments on the suspension? Roll call.
Squeak?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Libel?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Addie?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes, do you see?
Smith?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I second it.
John Elder moves to adopt. Angie Reese seconds. Uh, any discussion on this resolution? Okay, roll call.
Reese?
Yes.
Libel?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Addie?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Squeak?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. And moving on to committee reports, I'm gonna start with John Elder, laws, rules, and ordinance.
I have nothing to report tonight, Madam President.
Okay. Uh, Christine Wees, Community Partnership.
Uh, just one item, um, just as, more like a reminder, um, on the scchamber.org, uh, they have an events calendar and they shared just a variety of different things going on in the community. So I just wanted to make sure that I shared that information tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Uh, Danny Addy, Traffic and Utilities.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, one thing that came up was a, uh, concern about the school sign at Kroger School. Uh, they didn't think it was, uh, they thought it was too close to the actual school district or the school property. So people requested we move it back. So we have Bill Goon from Streets and Chief Bliss gonna take a look at that and address it. Uh, the only other thing I would like to tell, uh, the members of the community is if you do have any problems or concerns about traffic or utilities in any manner, give us a call so we can address it. Probably the best thing is call Madam Bliss to call and she will put it on our agenda for, because we do periodic meetings. So, that's about it, Madam President. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Chris Libel, Finance and Labor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, the only thing I have to report is the auditor told us that, uh, the last finance report of 2020 will be available to the public soon.
Okay. Thank you. Justin Smith, Parks and Recreation.
I had the privilege, Madam President, of going to the Lex Center this evening, uh, this afternoon, and, uh, they are really updating the lobby and they're getting things done. May the Lex Center looks very well, looks very professional, very nicely done. Uh, they're following the COVID protocols and, uh, there's hopes that we will continue to have sporting events and have all the summer activities that we usually do, uh, things, uh, things that hopefully are looking up. And, uh, Cody is doing a lot of work. When I went out there this evening, uh, this afternoon, Cody was actually doing a lot of the physical work, getting things done, uh, for the lobby and making things look really good. So Cody does a tap-natch job and, uh, I can't say enough good things about the Lex AC. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Angie Reese, Citizen Service Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to take this opportunity that we have the time, especially this very special occasion. I'd like to, um, start with saying that on February 28th, 2021, Fremont will be saying goodbye to a man that has dedicated his career to serving the residents of Fremont. Dave Fuze has led our Fremont Fire Department for almost 33 years. We may wonder what inspired him to work 33 years as a firefighter. Let me tell you his story. If you think this is long, just remember, he worked for 33 years for Fremont. A Fremont native in 192, 1982 Ross High School graduate, he joined the United States Marine Corps shortly after graduating. During his four years in the military, he drove a semi truck transporting heavy construction equipment. He spent time in Okinawa, Korea, and in the Philippines. When he departed from the Marines in California, his uncle wanted to help him obtain a job as a firefighter in California. But Dave was a proud young man. He wanted to be able to say he secured his job on his own. Lucky for Fremont, because Dave came back to Fremont. For one day, he shadowed his cousin, who was on the Fremont Police Department. That did it. He knew what he wanted. Dave applied and was accepted to the Fremont Fire Department. He had a job. As a youngster in 1972, the Fremont News Messenger around Thanksgiving did a survey asking, "What are you thankful for?" Dave, as a young child of about eight years old, was one of the people asked. He answered, "He was thankful for firefighters and when he grew up, he wanted to be a firefighter." On October 29th, 1988, his wish to be a firefighter came true. He became a member of the Fremont Fire Department. After obtaining steady employment on June 10th, 1989, he married the love of his life, Sarah Perry. Dave and Sarah are the parents of DJ and Matt. They are all into race cars. Dave and Sarah are grandparents to seven-year-old Weston. During 32, during his 33 years on the Fremont Fire Department, he implemented preventative measures for cancer nomads, barrier hoods, gear extractors, and decon measures. In 2015, IOF, no, ISO rating for the fire department improved to Class 3, placing our department in the top 8.6% in the nation. He established accommodations for Fremont, for female, for female firefighters and medics. Something Fremont had never had. Working with county commissioners, he helped establish a Sandusky County Building Department. This saves time and money for builders to be able to obtain permits here in Sandusky County instead of having to apply in Columbus. He assisted in setting up our present regional dispatch for city and county, saving the city and county money by combining our departments. Chief Fuze carried on a savings fund for assessed management. This, this helped save money to make big purchase items or apparatuses as a new fire truck purchased in 2014. Another fire truck is to be purchased next year, 2022. After February 28th, 2021, Dave and Sarah will be heading to relax in a warmer climate. We wish Dave and Sarah much happiness. We are thankful for having Dave keeping us safe for all these years. Thank you, Fire Chief David Fuze. Great job, well done. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And as far as the fire, or the police department goes, they're doing very good. They're staying safe. I had occasion to call on them, uh, two weeks ago tomorrow. They did an excellent job. Um, they took care of the problem and it was just, they did everything according to, to their rules and regulations, I guess, because everything's taken care of. And I thank the police department for keeping us safe also. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jim Sleet, Government and Economic Development. Jim, you there? Well?
Looks like his face is frozen.
Yeah.
I think he's floored by my speech.
No, I think he's posing for Mount Rushmore.
Well, we'll wait a minute. In the meantime, if somebody else wants to just, well, have a discussion or comments, um, Bob Gross, how about you?
Uh, so the one thing Councilman Sleet was gonna announce tonight, uh, Thursday, February 18th at 7 o'clock is gonna be a Economic Development Committee meeting. Pete DeSalvo from DeSalvo.
Anybody, can anybody?
Uh, Jim's kinda coming through, maybe. I think. I don't know, Jim's gotta get off that pileup system.
I see it's. All right. Bob, you on?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I kinda don't know what to do. I think my feed's okay, but I'm, I'm, uh, wanted to defer, uh, to, to you, Mr. Sleet. This is your committee report, Tom.
I got the information right here regarding, I'm still looking at the 18th, uh, before council meeting.
Correct. February 18th at 7 o'clock, Pete DeSalvo, DeSalvo Development, uh, will be here to, to talk about the housing study and discuss his findings.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not hearing that, boy.
Uh, I, I don't. He's, he's off again.
Okay.
What time was that?
7 o'clock.
7 o'clock.
Ken? Can, can you?
Jim, you kinda cut.
I don't know, I, I keep going in and out. I haven't done. And I'm looking at my screen and I don't see anything happening that shouldn't be. Bob, you? Christopher, can you stay on?
Do you want to just talk to my phone, Jim?
Yeah, that'd be great. Sorry, I don't know what's going on on this end, but.
Well.
Correct, uh, Mr. Gross?
Hello? Yeah, Jim.
Okay. At, uh, 7:00 PM and Bob? I'll let you fill it on about Pete DeSalvo.
Hey, Jim, make sure you pause here.
Ken, can, can you, I don't know, I'm looking at my screen and I.
There you go. Okay.
I think I can hear. I think I can hear.
This is crazy. At, uh, 7:00 PM, I'll let you fill it on about Pete DeSalvo.
Sure, but, uh, yeah, if Council, if I could kinda jump in and I think we're still picking up bits and pieces of it, but I think most of you know, uh, Thursday, February 18th, 7 o'clock, Pete DeSalvo, update on the housing study. Uh, at the same time, uh, I sent an email out to Councilman Sleet and Council President, uh, Ms. Halford this afternoon regarding an economic development update. Uh, I'm waiting on some, some numbers coming in from some local businesses that usually trickle in the last week of January, first week of February. Uh, so we can kinda put together some 2020 numbers, uh, economic development wise and then, uh, kinda jacked forward and talk about some goals and projects happening in 2021. So we'll have a PowerPoint presentation probably uh, 20.
Thank you. Are we there now?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not even getting.
Um, I'm gonna move on to Ken Frost.
Yes.
Let me unmute here. Go ahead and mute Ken here for a second. Uh, thank you, Madam President. I really don't have a lot. There's been a lot of things going on in the city. Uh, obviously with the presidential inauguration, we had, uh, um, some, some extra measures that we actually took place here, uh, in the city. Uh, as far as security goes, based off of some, uh, some, some threats that were relayed to us by the FBI, not necessarily for the city of Fremont, the nation in general. I'm sure if you watch inauguration, you can see the extra security. So, uh, even here in the, in a little town of Fremont, we, uh, we take those things seriously and, and we're always prepared. Our police department, as well as our fire department, is always prepared. Um, we had talked about, or, or Ms. Reese had talked about, uh, Chief Fuze. Captain Hallbyson is actually on this call. Uh, he's gonna start attending our meetings with us. Captain Hallbyson will be taking over for Chief Fuze on, uh, March 1st. Will be his first day in command. Um, so we welcome him, uh, looking forward to working with him and Captain Hallbyson, unfortunately, as you can tell from the speech that Ms. Reese gave, you've got some big shoes to fill. You got a lot of work to do. So, uh, and we're looking forward to it and we know you can handle it. Um, and the last thing that, that I wanna bring up to everybody is, is, uh, if you have not, uh, go ahead and drive by the Jackson Annex site.
Oh, it's amazing.
Fencing is down, the dirt's in, and, uh, I, I would've never thought in a million years that it would look as good as it looks right now. But I'm really looking forward to, uh, having some grass planted in there and in the future developments that are going in there. So, and as always, I'm available. If anybody has any questions for me, um, I'm available basically 24/7. If you call my cell phone or I'm in the office Monday through Friday until 4:00. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Justin Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Fremont is, uh, everywhere I go, Fremont, people are very happy about the city and the the improvements been made in recent years. Uh, as I've been going and tacking to constituents in the last few weeks, uh, doing, uh, meeting them and discussing things, I have not heard one negative thing about the city. So, uh, so I, I thank the mayor and the administration and all the employees of our wonderful city, uh, doing a great job and, uh, keep up the good, oh, keep up the good work in that. And then, uh, a few days ago, I believe on Tuesday, I did have a meeting, uh, with Cassandra Tucker's group about, uh, treating, uh, each other with respect and trying to, uh, promote kindness and equality in the city. That was a very good meeting as well. So there's always, uh, always something going on uh, and in Fremont and I'm proud of everything that's moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Shari Mullen, would you like to speak?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, we're moving forward with the city's diversity and inclusion initiative. And just to piggyback off of what Councilman Smith just said, if you are invited to a community forum in regards to racial divide or healing racial divide, um, if you're part of the city or on council, I just request that if the conversation is regarding hiring practices, if you could defer the conversation to Ken Frost or myself to answer that, or prior to going, you can contact the city's administration and we can give you a quick facts about our hiring practices. We just wanna make sure that we have a consistent message that we're saying when we attend the community forums. And I'm also requesting when you attend, a lot of times people are watching Libel on Facebook and they see a lot of us city officials and they assume that it is a city event. So when you introduce yourself, if you could be so kindly to always say thank you for the invitation to attend this community event. And I think that would bring a little clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Stevie, would you like to talk?
No.
Okay. Angie?
Are we back on council comments now?
We're just on, everybody's getting the opportunity to speak. So if you have something you wanna say?
Yeah. Uh, I've been hearing a lot these last few days, more so than others, on the COVID. Uh, I signed up for it through the Sandusky County Health Department and I don't know if I'll ever get the shot because they only got 200. This is what I heard. If it's true or not, I don't know. They only got 200 what is it, vaccines? So that means only 200 people. There's a lot of people here. But I've been hearing pros and cons against it and I think that I should encourage everybody to get it because without the vaccine, people are saying, you know, first of all, let me go back. People are saying that it's in the, um, testing stages. Well, it's the first vaccines that they're putting out, yes, but they've been tested. And unless, you know, if we don't take them, this vex, that's, this virus is never gonna stop. We're never gonna control it. Maybe it, it may not never stop, but we, you know, we'll be able to control it if everybody takes the proper step to, to avoid it, to, to prevent it. So I encourage everybody to please, you know, read up on it and just be confident that this is the thing to do in order for us to get back into a normal, normal world that will never be in the same world we were before, but, you know, at least we can be meeting in person instead of through these Zooms and not having trouble with the Zoom things and everything. And, and I'd like to congratulate, um, future, um, future Fire Chief Paul Hallbyson. I look forward to meeting with you. And please give me your contact information so that I can be in contact with you. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. John Elder?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this past Monday was the Martin Luther King Annual Breakfast. Um, unfortunately, due, as we all know, events, it was held virtually. Um, the breakfast was made through, was it Joy's Kitchen, Stevie? I apologize. I don't remember. Can't remember the exact. Joy Bell, excuse me. And I believe she sold about 94 breakfasts. And then we held a virtual meeting where Shari Mullen was the keynote speaker and did a wonderful job. It was really fun. Um, as always, it's a wonderful event. Congratulations to Chief Fuze on a great, many, many years of service. He'll be sorely missed and congratulations to Paul Hallbyson to be named as a successor. I'm sure you'll do wonderful. Um, for you football fans, um, sometime in February, they're going to announce the newly elected Hall of Fame members of the NFL Pro Football Hall of Fame. And the odds are that Fremont's Charles Woodson will be one of the inductees to the class, which I think is a wonderful tribute to Fremont and things. So that's all, Madam President.
Thank you. Holly Elder?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I have nothing this evening except to congratulate Mr. Hallbyson on his new position with the city and I'm certain that he will be very successful. Thank you.
Okay, Bob, you wanna give me your DORA update?
Yeah, if everybody else has had a chance to go, I, uh, uh, the cups came in, uh, on Tuesday, so we pushed the, originally, we were hoping for New Year's Eve and delivery. We pushed it back to the 15th. The cups did not arrive till Tuesday morning. The start date for DORA is January 29th, which is next Friday. Myself and Christopher Bilder have been to 10 of the 12 establishments, uh, met with those establishments, gave them, uh, their case of cups, the rack cards, uh, the, uh, responsible serving literature, uh, from the Health Department, uh, that Mr. Posey uh, had, uh, kind of, you guys have been in discussion with, with Mr. Posey. Um, we, so we've had the dialogue with the, the business owners. There is now a DORA tab on the city website.
Sounds like.
More information. And so, uh, one establishment, Anthony's, is closed down till, till February and they said, "Get back with them in, in February and, and we're gonna touch base, uh, with the other establishment tomorrow." And so we, uh, we look like we, the signs are off, trashcans are out and, and so it looks like we are uh, good to go. We encourage the, the, uh, DORA establishments to educate themselves, the staff, uh, pass out those rack cards to their patrons. And then if any time between now and next Friday there are questions, we will go meet with them. We will answer any questions, uh, um, so that we, this is launched in a, in a good manner and, and can execute it and and, and it actually, I think we've had this conversation before, launching it in the winter maybe to our advantage because we can kinda have a slow launch. People can ease into it, learn more about it and then be familiar with it, uh, as the weather breaks and really begin to utilize it this spring. And, uh, in addition to the DORA update, you may have seen the, the post on the Fremont Economic Development Facebook page, as well as the article in the News Messenger. Uh, the infrastructure for the new Sunset Meadows, uh, housing subdivision at the old Orman Orchard uh, is underway. Um, and so you see crews out there pushing dirt around and laying the infrastructure. Three phases, 30 to 40 homes per phase, uh, total of maybe 120, 130 homes and it's all done. Phase one is gonna be the first couple of years and then, and, and build out from there. And so construction of six new homes to begin later, later this spring with more homes to be constructed throughout the year. So, uh, the News Messenger article kind of alluded to, um, one of our goals in our economic development plan of, of new housing and new subdivision and and so this checks off one of those boxes and so, uh, but we'll have more economic development, uh, conversations and, and updates at the February 18th meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Chris Libel?
Uh, nothing much, uh, Madam President, just that it looks like I've successfully gotten Councilman Sleet back on the
Yeah.
back onto the meeting. So I'll, I'll yield some time to him to catch up.
Okay. Uh, Jim Sleet, do you wanna speak?
Uh, just again, uh, thank you, Mr. Gross, for, uh, getting everything information out there for, uh, the 18th. Uh, Madam President, I couldn't underst, I couldn't hear, so is that okay for you, though?
Yeah, it's fine. Looks like we lost you again.
I did a good job there, Chris.
I spoke to you soon.
Uh, Danny Addy, why don't you go ahead?
All right, thank you, Madam President. You know, I just wanna first say, thank you, Angie Reese. I think you did a great uh, research and biography of Chief Fuze. And Chief Fuze, uh, for the six years I've been on council, he's always been very open. He tells us what he thinks and he will be sorely. Thank you, Dean Schneider, for being our Assistant Chief and Captain Hallbyson. Good luck to you. We look forward to seeing more of you. Thank you very much. And as a good councilman in the past would say, support local, patronize your local restaurants and and that's all I have to say, Madam President. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christine?
Um, so I just wanted to, again, just thank you, Councilwoman Reese, for those kind words that you shared about Chief Fuze. He definitely will be missed and we definitely. about Chief Fuze. He definitely will be missed and we definitely welcome Mr. Hallbyson in his new role. We're welcoming to you and excited for you. And, uh, just to mention the Jackson Annex that just, that whole area just looks great and I can't wait to see the good things come in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Paul Hallbyson, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I just look forward to building relationships with each and every one of you. Um, Chief Fuze did leave some large shoes to fill, um, but I have every intention on doing that and, uh, creating my own shoes, uh, in the future for somebody else to fill. So like I said, I look, look forward to, to building the relationships with you that he had. And then, you know, building off of that and, and going from this point forward and improving the fire department, improving the city and, uh, helping each other out. So thank you. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you and congratulations to you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much for all the congratulations. I greatly appreciate that.
May I, may I have a minute?
Can you, I was gonna see if Dean Snyder wanted to talk and then you can.
All right.
Okay. Dean Snyder?
Yeah, I'm here. I, I don't have, I don't have anything to add other than, uh, it's been great working with Chief Fuze and look forward to working with Captain Chief Hallbyson when that becomes official on March 1st.
Okay, you're welcome. Angie?
Yes, I just wanted to mention to, uh, future Chief Paul Hallbyson about his neighbor. You have to be careful with your neighbors there.
Okay.
Who are their neighbors? You?
Oh, the chief of police bliss.
Oh, okay. I was wondering where you're going with that.
Yeah, your neighbor, you have to worry about him. You have to be careful. Don't worry about him. Just be careful. That's all.
We, we have a saying at the fire department of form your own opinion. It's usually what we tell the new guys when they, uh, get on the department about the other individuals that they work with. So I, I'm doing a lot of that right now and everything, uh, rest assured, it's going really well.
It's good.
He won't have to worry about Chief Bliss. I can take care of him for him.
There's a voice of experience.
Okay, um, there being no further comments, I'm gonna ask someone to make a motion to adjourn.
Tell me.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, Danny Addy makes a motion to adjourn. Chris Libel seconds. Roll call.
Libel?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Addie?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Okay, we're adjourned. Bye, everyone.
Thank you.